Hey Ronnie. How are you? Good to see you. This is a couple of times in the last couple of months with you. Starting to recognize you again.
How are you doing?
I didn't want them, everybody to forget what I was like.
Yeah, that's good. I'm much good. I think so. Rhonda, did you try to get on the go-to meeting already? Were you trying? Oh, okay. I just want to make sure that it shows up because we have to let you in as well. Okay, you should be a full participant. Ah, yep, gotcha.
Thank you.
You're welcome. They drove, Joe. How are you?
It's your season, isn't it?
What's that? Oh, it is. It's coming up after Thanksgiving. I don't put on my outfit till I...
I saw the Western Lights as I was heading out on the third street.
You gotta like drive down.
I know, I put my sunglasses on though.
Blinding.
I think like sixteen thousand.
Alright.
Lights?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
He goes all out. Nice ride.
Oh, yeah.
It looks like a candy cane force.
I need to take a drive by.
Yeah.
And luckily, because it's at the end of the course, they can drive by twice.
Oh, that's right. Kevin, how are you?
I sent Monica a picture of one of the offices upstairs. She thought those were big screen TVs. No, those are just blackboards.
TVs?
No. That's those glass.
Oh, oh, oh.
Look like blackboards. Yeah, blackboards. Those are marker boards.
Right, right.
I'm not sure how the colors show up on the... I was tempted. Everything on the board. Anyway, but it's got... Uh, that's the... Codes, so...
Oh, that's... Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's Drew's workspace right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, then I showed her the hallway.
It's kind of...
You know, I wanted to show her those arches on top of it. That trim, that's...
That's what was there?
Yeah. Yeah. Even though it's all messy, it shows.
Yeah. Oh, can she get some? Oh, my gosh. So it's kind of like pre-checked, but way better.
I don't think I'm going to join the meeting. I don't see a benefit to doing that anymore.
No, we can not cope with it. I would just use it to...
Yeah. I'd rather just pull the packet up. Have it bigger right here, so... Yeah, I just, I don't, I'm not into that. Oh, you could see, yeah, if they want to offer any, sure. Okay, alright. Yeah, sometimes that can create... Kevin.
Hey, Kevin.
Good, yeah. Good. How are you doing?
Just got to me. Talked about it, everything all good?
All good.
So. Make life... Yeah, sorry, I probably should have told you, you could have just...
You could have phoned it in.
Because I'm here with you guys, there's a place I don't have to be. This will probably be a short reason in your... But yeah, Rudy's... It's gonna... Only if someone has questions. Oh, okay. Thanks, Kevin.
Yes, sir. So you have to get permission, I'm sorry. You got it?
Let me see.
Yeah. Yep, sorry about that, yeah. Everybody comes in on lockdown, we gotta turn you off.
Now what's wrong? You don't have to, you don't, if you don't want to, I just am not sure you could.
Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the November...
Hunter Michael.
Here.
Daniels.
Here.
Patterson.
Here.
MacMorhan.
Here.
Lane. It appears Councilmember Lane is absent.
I would invite you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright. Before we get into the consent agenda, I'm gonna, I would like to recognize Frungard, who has been awarded the Kansas Association of City and County Managers, the Leadership Award for December, or for 2025. And he'll be in Emporia, collecting that award on December 4th. So I would ask you all to join me in congratulating Mike on this award.
As any good leader, you're supposed to completely defer the credit. So I defer to the city council over the past stretch of years, the mayor, and all cities. Thank you for that, appreciate that.
First item tonight is our consent agenda. Tonight on the consent agenda from the November 6th city council meeting, and approval of Pay Ordinance Number 1008. Is there any item anyone would wish?
Yeah, I'd like the pay ordinance removed, please.
Okay, all of it or a check?
Check 53314 for May's communication.
Can you get, what, that number, 533414? Okay. Anything else? Anyone else? So could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding check number 53314 from a ordinance?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, removing check 53314 from the consent, or pay ordinance.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Hunter Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
MacMorhan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so let's consider check 53314 from, for in payment to May's communication.
Do we have an invoice for that, Mike?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, it was from September and October.
Okay, do we know what the current total spending on that contract is at this point?
I haven't checked after that last pay ordinance. I could, I could get that for you, though. Yeah, I haven't checked the total.
Okay. Alright, that's good.
We have a motion to approve paying check 53314?
So moved.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Patterson.
Yes.
MacMorhan.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Hunter Michael.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, item two is called a public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter, business not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments that are discussed under Call to Public may or may not be acted on by the council during this meeting. There is a four-minute time limit. If you wish to address the council under Call to Public, please stand, state your name and address, and come to the podium.
Matthew Ross. 12927, 170th Street. You can find that in Lindwood, Kansas.
I realize this isn't in DeSoto, but I do have some information here I'd like to share with, with everyone here in DeSoto. Okay. So, good evening, Mayor Walker and council members. Yes, my name is Matthew Ross, and the reason that I'm here is in concern with the Cal Valley Sand Company that's proposing to excavate dredge and stockpile large mounds of sand in the extreme southern Leavenworth County area, which would be directly north of the Burning Tree Golf Course, and less than a half a mile from the DeSoto city limits. As you may or may not be aware, the Cal Valley Sand Company is requesting a special use permit through Leavenworth County with proposals to dig nearly 435 acres of pits that would be 50 feet or more deep, with the potential of acquiring even more property as industrial demands dictate. I understand that DeSoto may have taken a stance with restricting large truck traffic on their streets and even corrective matters and measures concerning wellwater contaminations. However, I have additional concerns for the residents of DeSoto and southern Leavenworth County. The river is a physical barrier between the counties, but what is it that's going to keep the wind from carrying sand dust over into DeSoto? Well, there's nothing, and it's scientifically known that sand dust carries with it fine particles called silica. Silica dust is very dangerous when inhaled without using proper filtering masks. Silica is known to cause POD, COPD, silicosis, which is irreversible lung conditions with no treatment available, and other forms of lung cancer. This dust can be picked up by the wind and traveled many miles. With the many piles of sand stockpiled waiting to be transported to Edwardsville, along with the seasonal strong winds blowing north and south across the flat river bottoms, it is extremely likely that DeSoto will be affected with this sand and silica dust. The Cal Valley Company has stated that they will wet the piles occasionally, or every two or three days, but that interval, interval may not be adequate enough, nor will Leavenworth County be able to enforce compliance due to low staffing and budget restrictions. Sand dries out very quickly, which could place DeSoto residents in danger long term. And let's take note, the Cal Valley Company would be able to dredge and stockpile sand 24 hours a day in order to keep their 40-ton trucks, their transport trucks, busy throughout the daylight hours. So as we know, Miller Park is the best city park in all of Johnson County, yet this park, as well as a Riverfest park, may, may have more silica dust particles to deal with. The particles may be small enough to infiltrate HVAC systems of homes and businesses. This dust will potentially cover trees, homes, roads, and all other structures, and over a long period, it could prove dangerous to many. The concern of the dangerous silica dust is real and can even be an effect in declining property values. Studies have shown that living near quarries and pit mining operations can cause property values to drop, within one mile dropping 14.5%, two miles dropping 8.9. There is no doubt, the vast majority of DeSoto residents are not aware of this sand dredging, stockpiling proposal, and the potential of future health issues. This project is projected to last 25 and probably a lot more years in the future. This planned earth-scaring industry in southern Leavenworth County could be, could even prevent DeSoto from annexing and expanding any further north. With the door being open for this operation, it will no doubt grow to many more acres as industrial demands dictate. It is my hope that you will take the time to do your own research on the dangers of living this close to an active dredging sand pit, along with the airborne particles of silica dust that comes with it. It isn't hard to find all the disturbing information online. Please consider what harm lies ahead and what will be at stake for all the residents of DeSoto. You might be thinking that I am overreacting and pondering on the thought of this, well, why should I care? We have no say in what Leavenworth County does. I just ask you to think deeply about the negative impact this sand pit will have on your wonderful town. The Leavenworth Board of Commissioners will be voting to either approve or deny this proposal on December 3rd, 2025. Stopping having trucks from transgressing your streets is one thing, but neglecting known research concerning silica dust that could endanger the community is another. Please do not allow big money to go unchecked. Do your part.
Are you getting close to Matt? I'm sorry.
Just a minute, just a cannibal. I believe that DeSoto should have a voice in this matter. The question is, do you believe it? So thank you for your time. I wish that this statement be recorded. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Alright, then we'll go on. Old business, we don't have... Oh, I'm sorry.
Marie Caldwell, 8412 Corliss Road. I just want to bring up some concerns that have been happening. You know, as a taxpayer, I'm concerned about where my money goes, and I'm not very happy about the roundabout, and now what that's going to cost us to fix that egregious mistake. I also would like to know where that $600,000 went that we spent over for those communications to May's. If it went to the EDC, which is, I think, was a statement made earlier on, then why is that? You know, the chamber is a not-for-profit. They get money through member fees and fundraising and everything else. They're not supposed to have city tax money, taxpayer money. So, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Anyone else under Call to Public?
Mike Caldwell, 8412 Corliss. Matt Ross brought up a good point, how we need to be good neighbors with other counties, other cities. Nuclear power and DeSoto don't really belong in the same sentence, as far as I'm concerned, and I don't think our neighbors around us would feel too kindly to have a nuclear power plant at Astra. I'm not, you know, I'm a, I believe there's a place for nuclear power. It's going to be what we need in the future to get away from so much carbon, but along with solar and wind turbines. But having a nuclear power plant within, you know, a metropolitan area that's over 2 million people, common sense, that just doesn't make sense. I don't care, you know, you can talk hours on new technology, old technology, the waste storage, all of that. It's more of a, a local, you know, where it's located at. We've got parts of Kansas that are emptying out from, from people, a lot of open space. Wolf Creek wants it, they can have it, and I don't want my tax... Do, do you all really want to spend hours working on this, or days working on this over the next 10 years? Do you want to be on TV justifying this to greater Kansas City? I mean, your, your lives are going to be miserable trying to deal with this. I mean, just take a step back. I mean, we can nip this in the bud and now and be done, done with it, and I don't want my money spent on DeSoto getting sued, DeSoto having to justify, and going through all the processes it's going to take to get this thing approved, which I hope common sense would prevail. Okay, thanks.
Deline Moller, I live at 8990 Corliss Road, been here since 1979. The nuclear power plant is a bridge too far. We've gone to the battery plant, the sole... the solar farm, the data center, and now we're considering a nuclear power plant. And I'm concerned about our property values. I have no idea what it would do, but I imagine there's not a lot of people running to live next to a nuclear power plant. I do understand that it is clean and safe energy, but there's also a when you think of nuclear power, people aren't running towards living next to it. So I think we need to begin to take a pause, begin to think about the citizens that are living, have been living here for so many, many years. And I think we've gone far enough. And that's what I say. Thank you.
Anyone else under call to public? All right, we will move on in our agenda to item 4A, Consider Option of the River Master Plan.
Good evening. What you have before you is an update for the Riverfest Park Master Plan. Kind of want to start off first by thanking the steering committee members. Rick, Rob, Kevin, Noel from our park board, Lori sitting out here, Justin and Brandon as well. So we started this approximately eight months ago. Performed some public engagement at the Rhythm and Roots Concert Series and also an online survey. The steering committee worked with Bartlett and West to narrow the survey results and put them into a manageable package to try to define what fit best at Riverfest Park in terms of amenities and usage. Some of the amenities you'll see in the presentation following include sports field, parking lot, soccer amenities, restrooms, concessions, maintenance shed, sports fields, outdoor pickleball courts, bike park, walking paths within the native grasses, street widening and crosswalk, additional paved parking, divided dog park, amphitheater, pavilion, non-traditional playground equipment, trickle stream and paved trails. When you look at the total dollar figure, I don't want that to put you into shock. Yes, 9.8 million is what is in the, in this plan. Staff will, will be presenting this in phases, and the plan is to try to get this into the 2027 to 2031 CIP, obviously in discussions with city council on ideas and for the phasing and concepts. Staff is also working to identify grants, sponsorship and naming right opportunities. Some grants we've looked at so far, land and water conservation fund, recreational trails grant and transportation alternatives grant. So like I said, I don't want, I'm not up here asking for $9.8 million. This would be a phasing that we would be included in, in future CIPs, so. Turn it over to Caitlin with Bartlett and West, and she's going to go through the pretty stuff, so you don't have to look at me.
Thanks for the introduction, Jay. I would also just like to say that we've greatly appreciated working with the city of DeSoto, the steering committee, several park board members. A lot of you guys are here in the room tonight, and we've enjoyed getting to know your residents better as well. I will go ahead and kind of present through our slides here. It'll give you an overview of everything we've been working towards over the last eight months. So, yeah, I kind of just talk as you scroll through.
Just, yeah.
Yeah, if you go to this master plan element slide, this will be a good place to start. So these are, each circle identifies how we've broken down this master plan, and that is to help the staff and you guys in the future who are going to decide how this gets funded, to have them in manageable pieces. And so that's how we're going to present them tonight is in what we think are implementable pieces that could be done, you know, as separate chunks. We've made sure in this master plan that we didn't call them phase one, phase two, phase three, because we didn't want to lock you guys in to a set order that you have to implement them. So instead, they all just kind of have a title for their area. So if you go ahead and scroll, this is just a map that we created. This is an aerial of all the improvements, but the yellow dash lines show the 18-hole disc golf course that was recently installed, kind of this past spring. We just wanted to highlight that we have worked around this disc golf course, so you know, we're not undoing work that has already been done out there, as this is a nice amenity that was already added. If you proceed, we kind of start on the north side of the street closer to the river, and so this just shows an overview of the north side, which includes a playground trickle stream, paving the parking lot, a new pavilion, amphitheater upgrades, dog park, and native grass trails area. The following slides, we'll get into these in more detail. So here are some images of the playgrounds from public input. We got a lot of direction on needing a playground for younger kids, smaller, you know, pre-K and under type play areas. A lot of families go to parks and the equipment is too challenging for children, they're young children to play on, but we've also gotten the input from the community that they wanted more challenging play courses. And so how we went about designing this is separated areas. One is for very young kids, and then the other is called a parkour course, and so it's more challenging kind of, you know, rope climbing course-like, and then also an amenity shown here is a double zip line that, you know, you don't have to be harnessed into. It's like a playground. So that is all focused around the trickle stream, which if you go to the next slide, we can have some better images of that. So in talking with city staff and the steering committee and input actually from the public surveys, people didn't want the commercial splash pad look in, in this park, and so we went with a more natural look and calling it a trickle stream. So, you know, it's not the big red and blue umbrella splash pad vibe. It's these spray boulders. I don't know if anyone has been out to Lake Olathe's Splash Park, but they have spray boulders, and it's a wildly busy park there. People come from all around to use it. So I think it could be a big draw for DeSoto as well. So this is kind of proposing four spray boulders and two arch jets that would be along this trickle stream and be a fun thing to play in. And then proposing a new pavilion, this could be, Jay, I kind of forgot what we talked about. If it would be a rentable space, yeah, I think it'd be a rentable space for residents to rent out for events, parties, whatever, and it is located really close to the existing restroom and the parking lot for, you know, ease of access for everybody. It's pretty simple here. I mean, on the, on all of these slides, I didn't want to bore you all with too much of the details, but it is listed out what is included in these prices and all of it. So, you know, if there's utilities and landscaping and amounts of concrete and everything, it's all listed there for review. But throughout the park, we are looking to upgrade all of the gravel drives and parking lots to asphalt, and so that's what this slide is about. It's keeping that same loop that you guys are all used to, but paving it, putting sidewalk and nice trail to connect pedestrians from town out to the park appropriately. So that's a pretty simple one. And then the amphitheater, I know several years ago, there was, you know, an attempt to get an updated or to get a shelter out there, and that never got done, and so we are putting it back in this master plan as a recommendation. We think it would really bring a lot to the look and the feel for summer concerts, you know, fireworks, any events that happen out there. You're already positioned really well with all of the electrical and sound equipment and everything out there, and so not proposing any change of location, but just proposing a nice bandstand that could reflect the park's name or could have banners hanging on it or anything to show DeSoto's different events. And then we're also proposing some stone seating walls out in the green space that would just kind of tier the green space a little bit, but still leave plenty of grass area for people to bring lawn chairs and blankets and such, but it provides some seating for those who may come without their own seating. So that's kind of this one. And then a new amenity that we're proposing is a dog park, and this is a separated dog park, so for small dogs and large dogs. We are proposing a restroom near there and shade sales in both places for, you know, the parents of these dogs to sit. And then also agility equipment. That was something we heard from our public surveys, is that agility equipment would be nice, not just muddy grass for the dogs to run in. So that has been proposed here and within the native grass area. If you scroll to the next slide, native grasses, don't just think wheat fields, but more nice wildflower mixes with crushed refined trails in there, more off, you know, off-path trails, but could be a really pretty scene to be in while you're walking out there. One of the biggest inputs we got on the survey was that people wanted trails, and so throughout this master plan, pretty much each area that we've broken it out to includes some portion of trail expansion, and you can really see that on the overall images of how much we've looped trail around the north and the south. So we'll keep moving. This is just another parking lot rehab, not too much different than, I mean, what you guys have out there right now as far as like location and space that would take up, but paving it, striping some stalls for actual boat parking, few upgrades there, but pretty, pretty minimal. And then we move to the south side, which is we've really located all of the sports stuff down there, and so it kind of separates it, you know, from more recreation to more passive uses. So we can go ahead and scroll through these, but one of the first amenities that we heard a lot of desire for is pickleball, and I think right now it's just the pickleball here in this building as far as what's in town. So some outdoor pickleball was desired, so that's what's shown here is five pickleball courts with benches, water fountain, trash and shade over the seating to sit in while you wait for pickleball. And it's located, you can go ahead and scroll to the next slide, located right next to a proposed bike park, which would include a pump track. For those unfamiliar with pump tracks, it's a track that can be used for bicycles, skateboards, rollerblades, really any wheeled, non-motorized vehicle. It's a pretty cool thing, and there's not too many in the area, so I know it would draw people to DeSoto and to your guys' park, and then also some lower skill items shown in there that could be for younger kids or just the looped path for families to bring their kids out and ride bikes. And then this is south of the creek that runs down there, and this would be proposing a pedestrian bridge that would also be of size and scale for maintenance vehicles to get across, but really just taking you to more of the native wildflower areas with crushed refined trails to just add more length to the trail systems that are desired. And then I'm sure you guys are all aware of, you know, the soccer fields project that's already happening separate from this. So we do show the soccer fields in here, but we're not actually addressing the soccer fields. But some upgrades to the sports parking lot would be to pave it with the soccer field project. It's planned to just be gravel for now. So this would be paving that whole south parking lot, and then, you know, adding the correct ADA signage, et cetera, trails. And then the next slide, again, this is, you know, the costs in this are not for the actual fields, but it's for all of the amenities around the fields. So this includes a really long section of the trail loop that goes clear around the baseball and soccer fields. Playground relocation, so the existing playground that is out at Riverfest Park, we are proposing that it gets relocated down here near the fields so that when families are here for tournaments or practice, there's a place for the younger siblings to play. And then, you know, landscaping and such as well. And then baseball fields is one of the big ticket items as part of this master plan, but two new baseball fields with all of the new amenities that go with it, lighting, you know, the full package here, irrigation for the infield, the concrete trails and landscaping around it, all new dugouts, bleachers, et cetera, to provide a really nice sports park. And then between the soccer and baseball fields is a concession stand and restroom. It also has this nice shade pavilion off the end of it, because we know when you're out for a tournament day, you get really hot and sunburnt, so wanted to make that a nice amenity for anyone who would be in the sports park. And then I think the, the last few slides are the less flashy pieces, but definitely needed, so a maintenance shed for the parks and rec staff. This would be near the sports parking lot, getting utilities to it, and then a new structure. Yep, the next slide is the street widening and crosswalks. So right now, your guys' most recent street project basically stopped at the first entrance to Riverfest Park, the loop parking lot, and so bike lanes and such are brought to that point, but not further on, and knowing that, you know, kids may be riding to practices or to the bike park that we're proposing, we wanted to show bike lanes all the way to the west entrance to the park. And then crosswalks to cross from the north to the south side, we're proposing just those flashing pedestrian lights. And then this is really the nitty-gritty details of it. I certainly don't need to go through all of this with you guys, but that's the line-by-line item, engineer's estimate, that tells you exactly what and what quantities was included in all of those. So yeah, in closing, it was just really, it's been great to work with city staff and everyone else that we've come in contact with and just kind of reiterating Jay's points of, you know, it's not one overall number. So I know he has some closing elements too, but we've really broken it down into those bite-sized pieces for you. So is there any questions while I'm here?
Questions from council?
Yep.
In the playground area, is there any handicap accessible play equipment?
The actual play equipment, I guess, is not like ADA certified, but to get to all, like, all of the access in the whole park is ADA. The trickle stream would be handicap accessible, and actually, the youngest play area, several amenities are handicap accessible. We have like a water table that's at handicap height, but that parkour course and the zip line aren't going to really meet that. Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
I didn't know if you had any more questions for me, but basically what we're looking for tonight, staff-wise, just approving the master plan and getting it incorporated with, with another planning documents within the city, so.
All right, any questions for Jay? Are you ready to adopt the plan?
Because I don't have questions for Jay. I just would have a couple of comments. Being on the committee for this, it's an ambitious plan. I like what I see. I would say that I think the five-year timeframe is probably a little aggressive amount of dollars spent, considering some of the other priorities in the city happen as well. Because that's basically $2 million a year. Now granted, if we can find grants and other funding outside sources, that can change the timeline, but if, and without knowing the other grants, things like that, I think extending that timeline to be a little bit spread out more than what it is would be more appropriate.
Yeah.
So is this, or could this be set up on more of a phased process versus, we're going to work on, maybe you said that, and I apologize.
Yeah, it'd be phased, yeah. Total being 9.8 million, we would phase it, so basically, staff, I think, would come to you all with a, you know, kind of a recommendation and phasing, then we would have a discussion on kind of what, what you all think as well. Try to come to a, you know, an agreement on a schedule of phasing this out, and obviously, and on the financial side, as Rob just pointed out, that that's a good, good chunk of change, so.
Soccer fields in this cost, or were they outside of it because they were already planned?
They're, they're outside of it.
Okay, so that 9.8 is not including the soccer fields.
Correct.
Already basically budgeted outside of that, so that would be in addition to that as well.
Correct. Yeah, so we're just asking you for adopt a plan and then not spending any money or, yeah.
Saying we like the plan and we want.
Right. Right.
Plan as we go. Correct. I have no problem with the plan, but that's where I'm wanting to make clear that
Yeah.
the timeframe of the 27 to the timeframe of the 27 to 31 isn't a set timeframe that it is out over longer.
Right.
Possibly needed over a longer timeframe. But at this point, we're talking about just what we see as far as a concept.
Yeah. I guess my, I could have worded that differently. I want to get it in on the five year CI, everything in on the five year CIP in terms of being listed now. Expectation of all that being done in that five year period or or not. I know that's not feasible, but just to get them on the list and everybody's aware of what's going on. So.
Well, I don't know that I would discount it. It's totally not feasible. I think it's a matter what's, what citizen ambitions are and citizen desires and how it gets viewed relative to other uses of funds or other facilities or other infrastructure that may be built, you know, working on the advisory committee. It's an exciting plan. And I think it'd almost be unfortunate to know all that this, all of this could be an amenity in the community and have to wait eight or nine years, you know, to see it become reality. And meanwhile, you know, it could be something that if you, you know, if you did figure out a way, if you get it in the plan, then you can, you know, at least have a tool to figure out, is there a way to get this done? Maybe sooner than, than 2031 or whatever, because it, you know, be an amazing community, community amenity. And as you said, with some of the, as it was said, it was some of the features would be a draw. Certainly ball fields can be a draw, you know, that's, you know, revenue generating in terms of bringing people into the area. You know, eating locally, maybe have an hotel by then, shopping locally, that kind of thing. So. Well, as a member of the committee, then I'll make a motion to adopt the DeSoto Riverfest Park 2025 master plan as presented tonight.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Roll call please.
Mac Moran.
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Hannah Michael?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Item four B, consider resolution of intent development agreement issuance of industrial revenue bonds and related.
Yes, council. These proceedings relate to the expansion that was announced by Intervet, also known as Merck. In the audience, we have Dave Evans, Executive Director of Intervet. Also Councilman Rudy B.C. And then we also have Jeff White, Financial Advisor, as well as Kevin Wimpy Bond, Council. The way to view this essentially is Resolution 2084 and also the development agreement, those documents both address the $985 million in IRBs. And so we will have a public hearing here in a bit. So in that, the public hearing is for consideration of the 85% tax abatement that will be applied to the 985 million in IRBs. Again, as we've talked on prior projects, this is not money of the cities. We're not spending the city's money. We're not using the city's financing. This transaction does not affect the city's credit in any way. Jeff White prepared the cost benefit analysis that's required by statute that's attached to the memo I provided. So outside of the Resolution 2084 and the development agreement the other documents that you have is ordinance 2674 and a pilot agreement. Those two documents relate to the 52 million 300 in IRBs that is being requested for 2025. And that relates to building 38. So that's part of this expansion, but those bonds are being issued year 2025 before the end of the year. So with that, I'll turn it over for questions. But as far as action items, we just need action on after the public hearing, Resolution 2084 and then ordinance 2674.
Okay. Before we open the public hearing, then any questions from council for Patrick?
One question clarification. It says Merck is requesting the city's agreement to issue 908 for IRBs. Is that an action that is binding on future councils? Seeing that says future IRBs and not actually currently asking us for it?
Yeah, we, unlike prior occasions, this time around, and given that this was, you know, pre in prior years, we really didn't have projects that were defined. Here we do, we have 985 million expansion defined. So Jeff White did his cost benefit analysis on that entire expansion project. So given that we did the cost benefit analysis on the entire project, the defined project, then no, we will not have to have a public hearing for future tax abatements. Now we will, as the different phases come around, we will pass an ordinance and a new pilot agreement, but your action tonight, you are indicating it is the city's intention to grant an 85% abatement over the entire map. So we will not have future public hearings.
So will that be, will that be one IRB or will that be IRBs?
Multiple.
Okay. And it's not just an intent to issue, this is saying we will issue?
Correct.
Any other questions? All right, with that, I'm going to officially open the public hearing. Anyone come to the podium and state your name for us? All right, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to close the public hearing. It's back before the governing body. Any further questions or discussion from council on the resolution or the ordinance?
This is, I guess I'm still trying to figure out how, if we can't bind future councils, how we're binding future councils.
Well, you know, tech, if you look at the development agreement, there is statements about, you know, Kansas law and the fact that part of this is legislative. So I guess my comments to you are unlike prior occasions where each tax abatement that came before you, we do a separate public hearing. And you've been told that, no, you're not bound to do anything. You know, that's what the public hearing is about, is to inform you on how you want to vote on this tax abatement. This is different in that you are giving that intention tonight over the 985 million. But if you wanted to get super technical about it, yes, if a future council decided to go rogue, so to speak, that's, it's not like the city's going to get sued or, you know, have a money judgment against it because these are considered legislative acts. But I just want to be clear that yes, tonight by passing this resolution, you are giving the company your intent that for this expansion for the 985 million dollars, they are going to get an 85% tax.
And make no mistake, I'm not against it. I mean, Merck's been a phenomenal community partner. And this isn't just expanding or bringing new business in, but this is retaining a very good wellbeing community partner. So I'm not against it. I'm just trying to get the clarification on that aspect of what we've been pulled throughout. So.
I, any, any further discussion? Kevin, anything? Waiting on.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve those, Resolution number 2084 to issue industrial revenue bonds in an aggregate amount not to exceed $985 million for the benefit of Intervet, Inc., its successors and assigns.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Hannah Michael?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Mac Moran?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2674 authorizing the issuance by the city of DeSoto in an amount not to exceed 52 million 300,000 aggregate principal industrial revenue bonds. The Intervet, Inc. project.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Roll call please.
Daniels?
Yes.
Hannah Michael?
Yes.
Mac Moran?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. C, consider ordinance 2675 authorizing issuance Oak Creek Town Home project.
Yes, council. This item is different than Intervet in that roughly a year ago, you passed a resolution indicating your authorization of industrial revenue bonds and a tax abatement for this project. The action tonight on the ordinance is simply the last step in that process. It authorizes the actual issuance of the bonds and the details of the bond. So recommend adoption of ordinance 2675.
Questions from council? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2675 authorizing the city to issue taxable industrial revenue bonds Oak Creek Town Homes in a principal amount not to exceed $5,750,000.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Roll call please.
Daniels?
Yes.
Hannah Michael?
Yes.
Mac Moran?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Item D, consider letter of interest regarding Terra Power project.
Yes, Mayor, by way of background, Terra Power and Evergy in the state of Kansas back in September entered a memorandum of understanding to explore the possibility of a, an advanced nuclear reactor site to be located somewhere within Evergy's service territory in Kansas, which is a parts of Kansas. Technology is the next generation of nuclear, nuclear power. The main difference is that rather than being cooled by water, the nuclear reactor by liquid sodium, which has a factor of safety involved because it's not under pressure. So the technology has been, is, is one of many advanced nuclear technologies being explored by, by a number of investment firms and, and interest around the country and ramp up of, of power demand that's coming. The state and Evergy and Terra Power in the very early stages of investigating where one of these facilities may occur. They currently have broken ground on a test site in Wyoming. And that would be a 325 megawatt facility that has received a degree of approvals from the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. And they hope to be continuing with that construction and, and bringing that site up operational. But the, the company has has plans for additional site locations around the country. They also have similar MOUs in other states for similar. Here in Kansas, since that announcement, a number of communities expressed letters of interest and actually a full throated support and, and really, you know, excitement about having the facility potentially located in their communities. The main one, Coffee County, where Wolf Creek facility is, would make a lot of sense. They've expressed interest with the Department of Commerce. Lion County and Emporia and Hutchison or others, I think there, there may be a the city of DeSoto does have an interest in making sure that Evergy is investigating ways bring on more power. And that's because of the advanced manufacturing, the data center and some of the other economically beneficial projects that happen here in town. There is a need for more power. There's a deeper power. And we've also had an effort toward at least one green energy project. Made the, made the way for the consideration of a utility scale facility at Astra. And when you look at our position with the power loads that we have here and the potential power loads for new in, in new projects, it makes sense that if, 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 if an effort's being made to locate it such a facility in the state of Kansas, they, they might want to locate close to where the power domain is. And with our position there and the land availability around here, it's possible that they might want to look near, near DeSoto in Johnson County. So I, I feel it's important that we remain engaged with that discussion and learn more about that. There's a lot we don't know. There's a lot the community doesn't know. We don't know how the community feels. We've heard from a few this evening. I'm sure there are others. We don't know the benefits. We don't know the drawbacks. So what you have before you is a very short, very brief memorandum to the Department of Commerce that essentially just says, we appreciate the opportunity to continue in these discussions. Does not endorse the project in any way, does not say we want one of these in any just welcomes the continuing dialogue for the reasons that I've indicated. And so Mayor, with that, you know, it just, it just, it welcomes the, welcomes the engagement. And so I'd recommend the council approve this letter. We'll send it to the Department of Commerce.
Okay. Well, I'd just probably reemphasize that, you know, we're not endorsing or committing to a project, just trying to keep the door open to, to gain additional information. I don't know whether a new facility is ripe for DeSoto or not, but I know that we won't know if we don't have the conversation. So we need, I, I think it would be important that we would gather more information before we're, an appropriate level of information before other than dismissing something out of hand. But if we don't express an interest in having the conversation now, we might not get a chance later. So our best interest to say, yes, we'd like to have the conversation. Tell us what, more about what this project is and engage our community and see what, whether or not that's a fit for DeSoto. Any thoughts from council members?
I would say I'm very skeptical about the project, but also having a background in education, I would be willing to get more educated in something like that myself, but that's it.
All right, thank you.
I think one thing we, we do know is that something like this would have a long lead time with a ridiculous amount of public engagement and assessment at the Nuclear Regulatory Commission and that kind of thing. So it's not even really a project that would just come to us for approval with the planning commission and away you go. You know, it's not that simple. And if we're not in a situation where we're not in the conversation, that it can happen I, and really not be able to be a part of that education and learning process. So I think it's really crazy, exciting kind of technology and it would be really interesting to learn about and ultimately probably may not even be this community's decision to not have it if the opportunity. So comment was made about, you know, does it make sense to have it out at Wolf Creek? And it probably does. But it would be great to be in the conversation while that's occurring at the same time that some high volume users are considering.
I'd want to keep in the conversation. To the table.
Yeah, yeah. First learned of Terra Power, there, there was a CBS Sunday Morning segment on them about a year and a half ago, maybe on the project they're doing in Wyoming, Kimmerer, Wyoming. And it caught my interest and I thought, that's an interesting. Kimmerer, Wyoming. And it caught my interest. And I thought, that's an interesting, but never had any idea watching that a year and a half ago, that, that might even, that technology might be migrating, you know, outside of Wyoming and making its, that would be something we'd consider in DeSoto at that time. It was just, but it was a very impressive amount of research and technology that's gone, gone into developing that Kimmerer, Wyoming plant.
Well, it's something that's obviously, or obviously, it's something that is a topic of discussion at the KCADC level, given the current chair, chair of the board. So, you know, there's, there's talk about the metropolitan area in that.
Any thoughts, Victoria?
Um, I would just like to learn more. And I do have one edit in the letter.
Sure.
If possible, if this does get sent off with my last name.
Oh, sorry. Is, is that in our, in our letterhead?
Oh, I, I am so sorry. Probably an autocorrect.
That is my mistake.
The only edit I have to the letter.
Yeah.
And I can't believe Hunter Michael's not misspelled.
I can misspell it for you.
So I was gonna say, I've had a number of conversations since the agenda came out. And I've had a number of questions. So a couple of the questions I'm gonna ask are simply ones that have been asked of me. First of all, one of the questions was, who's asking for this? Is this mayor? Is this city staff? Is this county, state, Astra, Bill Gates? I mean, where's the request for this letter coming from as far as who's asking and what brought it up? So that's one of the first questions I've had.
Yeah, um, you know, community-wide, the Department of Commerce knows there's big stuff going on. And, you know, they did reach out and suggest, hey, have you heard about this? Would you be interested in this? You know, what about a letter of support from DeSoto? So it was, it was the Department of Commerce. Also, I did, I, I failed to mention the, we did get a letter this afternoon from the Economic Development Council, the president there, Tim, you submitted by email a letter, essentially in support of the idea of, of expressing interest.
Second was, how long has the letter of interest been bounced around as far as concept idea being brought up? I mean, is this just something that came up recently or is this been something that's been in the works for a little while?
It was in the last few weeks.
Not on the letter of interest, but do we know how much land, like Wyoming and the build time for it?
Yeah. So what I've learned about the Wyoming, I'm not sure, but the facility itself, forty to eighty acres, maybe a hundred acre for the facility itself. And then there's a safety zone around that, but it's not a whole lot. So in the order of a hundred, potentially all, all in, that would be, yeah, facility is the one.
Yeah. Cause I also understand the build time on these is substantially less than.
It is, yeah. The technology is such that, you know, with any power plant, you have to have the fuel source and the source of heat and then the generation capacity. And so the way these are constructed, they break those two apart. So the nuclear part, one kind of facility in one site, but then the power generation, the steam turbines, and that's another part. The power generation isn't as tightly regulated. And so it's, it's easier to build. It's easier to get, so they can start on that and kind of parallel track. Yeah. So, so in that way, I think there's some, in terms of how quickly one could be stood up, that doesn't talk at all about the regulatory. So I'm not, not familiar enough with that part of it.
Yeah. Cause I mean, at this point, it is mostly educative of, let's at least find out more. But like I said, those were questions I've been getting asked that deserve valid Any other comments?
I'd make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign this letter of interest.
With the correction.
With the correction noted to Victoria's name.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hunter Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
McMarion.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item F, that.
E.
I'm sorry.
CIP update.
Oh, yeah. I just skipped right over you.
Yeah.
CIP update, E.
Uh, yes, counsel, I, I don't know if I have a whole lot of session points to make here this evening. After our last discussion, we, we kind of had, had narrowed the public input process and the base down to kind of a list of about twenty projects. We added one at, at the last meeting, you know, an effort for the downtown streetscape effort there was added to the list. Really, tonight and in your, in your packets, before today, I submitted to you one possible scenario for what it would look like if we wanted to implement some or all of these projects at your places. And then this afternoon, I uploaded to the, I added two more scenarios. And these scenarios really, they don't break it down into year by year, but they look at a full five-year period and what would it, what would the money look like if we wanted to implement certain projects in certain ways? A couple of things to keep in mind on all of the scenarios really is that we've talked about these pipeline projects, the Eighty-third Street Portors, big community, big effort pipeline project. The Community Center is another one in the Ninety-Fifth Street from Kill Creek Road out to Sunflower Road. Those are three big pipeline projects that what I don't have in the, in the current version of, of the, of the, of the scenarios, none of the implementation on any of those projects are included. Really, it's just the initial phases of study, of permitting, of establishing a scope and fee, and then finding outside funding sources for those that are included in these scenarios. So it's certainly in the early years, those efforts will be the, will be the main focus of those, of those big projects. The other thing I tried to do when you're, when we're looking at possible funding, so we've talked about outside funding. So we've said that word a lot, outside funding. It's gonna take some outside funding sources, but I haven't really identified, and I still really haven't, what exactly those funding sources might be, how we would go about getting those, how much they might pay for each project, what it would take to secure that funding and, you know, and the timeline of those. That would really kind of be our next step, the next big effort to identify, you know, just off the top of my head, Joe could probably ramble off many others. You know, we have the county programs, the Stormwater Management Council program, county cars programs for the road improvements. We also have the Mid-America Regional Council has a process to funnel federal funding, highway funding, and a number of programs there. We have Safe Routes to School programs and some other, we've heard about park, park grants earlier from Jay with the Park Master Plan. All of those are kind of the, a big ball of outside funding sources that we're kind of reserving that discussion for later. But a lot of those pipeline projects rely, will rely on a combination of some of those. So with that said, the other thing I tried to do in these scenarios was identify a potential scenario. We, projects are pretty heavily loaded toward parks. The trails are big ones. The, you know, the, trails along Kill Creek Road from Eighty-third down to K-ten rank very highly. It's a pretty expensive project. There's another couple trails along Eighty-third Street that rank very highly, but they're, but they're pretty expensive projects. It kind of lends itself toward the idea that eventually, if we're gonna borrow money for those projects, we have to have voter approval to borrow money for those projects. So makes sense that we would eventually possibly ask the voter for a bond referendum. So what I've done in each of the scenarios is try to break out, kind of differentiate some of those projects within a possible Parks and Rec bond from the rest of it that'll be just funded by the CIP, either existing funding sources, which we've talked about. You know, there appears like there's a two million dollar figure in there, just without any new bonding or it has extra in the CIP right now that we could program. And then CIP bonds, general obligation bonds, might even be revenue bonds for water and sewer, those sorts of things. So the, the two columns there on the right side of these spreadsheets really are, it's CIP or it's Parks and Rec referendum bonds issues there. So the first scenario that was in your packet, just a little, project P twenty-two, which is the Kill Creek Road pedestrian path, it is included in the funding scenario without the Parks and Rec bond. So it is that this scenario includes that one in the general CIP, funding for, just, just out of the general CIP funds. The Ninety, the Ninety-Fifth Street reconstruction, the portion between Lexington and Kill Creek is not proposed for funding in that scenario. That's the one that's got a nineteen and a half million dollar price tag. I should probably break that one as a pipeline project as well, and I'll do that in some, that's a big ticket item. Did rank highly, but it's not proposed for funding. And then on the far right column of this first scenario, you have about six million dollars of potential Parks and Rec bond referendum projects. And those include kind of this laundry list, you know, a few of which were in, are in the master plan. We just, we just saw parking lot at Riverfest, Miller Park Restrooms, concessions at Riverfest. Another, you can see the other park development, a couple of other trails there. The two big trails, Eighty-third Street from Laramie to Corliss Multi-Use Path there, and then Corliss Multi-Use Path. Those are the bigger kind of path recreation trail projects that would potentially be in a six million dollar. Project twenty-six, Ninety-Fifth Street Bridge. So this is within the corridor of Ninety-Fifth between Kill Creek and, and Lexington Avenue. We have two projects identified for this bridge. One's a rehab at one point five million, and the other one's a complete reconstruction at four million. The one point five million rehab project is already incorporated into the CIP as a mandatory. So it's not on this list. So on this list, I've zeroed out the, that doesn't mean we're not doing anything with it. Really, it's just the rehab that that would be included in this scenario. And I mentioned, it wouldn't include the implementation of pipeline projects or any of that. So if you look down at the very bottom of this scenario, you have two columns. One says twelve point one million, the other says just over six million. The six million is that bond, that park referendum. The twelve point one million is the overall cost of everything I have allocated to that column. But remember, we already have about two million available kind of in the CIP. So this might result in a CIP debt issue. We've, we've looked at those sorts of scenarios before. All else being equal, that impact could be as much as four, four mils. But I would say that, that there's a lot of room to structure that debt in a way that's backloaded. Our debt service, if you look at our profile over the next thirty years, it's high now and then it tapers off. We could structure the debt so the impact isn't as much. So don't take too much stock in that four point one mils right now. It's the ten million dollar figure that's to, should keep in mind there. That's scenario one. Similar, two additional scenarios that I put at your places in the supplement. Let's get those pulled up here. In scenario two there at your place, essentially what I've done is I've taken all of the Parks and Rec, anything that could be considered a Parks and Rec project that might be put into a, is put into that column. And everything that's left is in the regular CIP column. So what that results in is a, is a potential Parks referendum of about eight point seven million, and that would leave about four million to, to fund just within the CIP. And then scenario three leaves the larger Parks and Recs projects to be funded in a potential bond issue, but moves some of the smaller ones and leaves those in the CIP. So if we go, I just wanted to show you here on scenario three here, you can see that some of these, the smaller parks projects are over here in the left column. So parking lot at Riverfest, the, the restrooms, the lighting, really, it's only those larger-scale trail projects that we're putting over in a potential bond, bond referendum. So, so the bond referendum works out three, six point three million. And in this scenario, the potential CIP bond would be eight minus, eight point four minus two, so six point four somewhere in there. And so that's kind of what, what I've prepared, prepared there. Again, this is just kind of a way to, this is my way, the way my brain works, kind of start thinking about how we can implement this list pretty long and pretty ambitious, like, like Parks Plan is. You know, several of them are gonna take some outside funding sources, some, some coordination there. Also important to keep in mind, we are, during this five-year period, we expect to be implementing hundreds of millions of dollars worth of developer-funded water and sewer improvements for the, for the data center project. So there was going to be a lot of capital improvement activity happening in town regardless of what we do. So that was all I had this evening, Mayor. If we have any questions about that, as I said, I think the next step is to take a closer look at these funding sources, start to narrow down a little bit about how it all sequences. And of course, we're gonna look at it every year, but, but how that all sequences through. And then, of course, compile the document that really gives further definition to what do we mean when we say this project, that project, project scopes and narrative. Love any feedback on, on any of these.
Questions or comments for Mike on the CIP discussion?
Thank you for adding the downtown.
Oh, yes.
To this.
Oh, I did mention scenario three doubles that funding. So that the thought is, rather than planning, we actually go do some, some of these easy things. You know, start thinking about some implementation of those early on. Yeah.
That was gonna be my next question, was implementation and timeframe. That's how this works.
Yeah, that's right. So the, well, I mean, if the streetscape master plan, the concept was just a plan. But in this, the third scenario, you kind of double that and then you can come to some, some things. So that's the concept there.
Comment on Corliss Road Multi-Use Path. I have yet to come across anybody that lives on Corliss that wants that.
Oh, no, really?
By any means. I know it's very low on the park board agenda. And on top of that, I mean, currently Corliss, the resurfacing Corliss was very poorly done. The shoulder, being black now instead of gray, the shoulders are hard to tell where the road ends and it has poor shoulders. So there are a lot of things where that money would probably be better served in improving the drainage and the gutters and, or not gutters, but the shoulders of Corliss and actually improving Corliss than dealing with a multi-use path.
I wonder how it got ranked so high?
I don't know. So.
It was somebody.
And I know it's low on the park board list, too.
Yeah. Is it?
So.
Okay.
That's my only comment on the CIP part of that.
Kevin, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Item F, FLU map discussion. Future land use map discussion.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I haven't pulled up this writing.
Yeah. So I asked for this to be brought back up. We passed it last week, but I've been looking at a lot of things and overlooked a couple of changes. If you can pull up, so if you take a look and start with the twenty twenty-two map, you'll notice the area, zoom in, yeah, you know where I'm going. So Sunflower and Ninety-Fifth Street, that area there in the twenty twenty-two future land use map is medium density residential for pretty much. For pretty much all of 95th and Sunflower.
Yeah, here's.
Right over there, because the blue is Evergy Substation on the northwest. You've got medium density residential all around it. So if you go down to the 2025 future land use map, we've changed the density to be low density residential for that whole area. However, to the west of the Evergy Substation and south of it is now multifamily. That now puts multifamily up against people like the Jill and her husband with its low density residential. So you now have multifamily, not against medium density, but against low density residential million dollar homes. And so I'm not sure if that's actually what was intended by planning commission and intended by us is to have that type of creep into what we've been telling the residents over there is going low density residential. Because I mean, all through this growth, we've been telling them your homes are pretty much gonna stay your homes. And now we're putting multifamily right up against million dollar homes, low density residential.
So isn't that consistent with the existing land use, though?
No, no, existing land uses rural.
Rural, yeah. But I mean, it's it would be more consistent because it'd be low density as opposed well, but previous map that was medium density.
The low density, yes, but the multifamily next to it would not be.
Yeah, the previous map
was the medium density like everything else.
Yeah.
And now we've added multifamily. So we've changed that from medium density to high density. I don't know if that was intentional or if that's a.
Was that part of the kind of the some of the Southwest group plan?
No, you know. Southwest growth plan on the housing part of it stopped at Sunflower.
Sunflower, yeah.
And that's why I wanted to bring this back up is that's not consistent with what we've been saying, and that's not consistent with what we had seen on the plan from what I remember.
Yeah, obviously, there was some conversation at planning commission when they made a revision to the map, and we don't have our planner here. So.
Yeah. Well, um, it's fair enough. I mean, I think, you know, a direction from stat or from the council or hay staff have a look at this.
Take it back, take it back to planning commission.
We'd have to start there, you know, we'll start.
But that's where at least bringing this back up and sending it back down going, was this your thought? Was this the intended thought? If so, why and what? What's up with it?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
All right. Advisory reports.
City administrator.
Oh, nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
The attorney. City engineer.
This one, we're working on having a public meeting for the 95th Street Benefit Sewer Project. We're looking at doing that. I think it's December 11th, 5 to 6:30. I just kind of wanted to put that out there now. So when the customers that went to TANCAK at least put it on the calendar, we'll send notices out.
What time, Joe?
It's 5 to 6:30.
On what day?
In the council chamber.
What day?
December 11.
Okay, anything else? All right. Thank you. Brandon, assistant.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. All right. Council comments. Victoria, anything tonight? Rhonda.
I just had a question about the like the incentive policy and tax abatements. How often that policy when when we look at that, how does that work as far as discussions around that?
Yeah, it's on. It's on the list to to have a look at that incentive policy has been, you know, for most of the year, really. We can look at it anytime we want. Usually we review it. It's been about annually. So, yeah, right after right after the first of the year. Plan to really dig into that. And yeah, we've had some land use changes. We've had, you know, comprehensive plan just changed. Lots of reason to have a look at that now. Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Rob?
Yeah. So first of all, congratulations, Rick, on another term. Second, it's been a pleasure and privilege to serve our residents on state council. During the election, some personally attacked me claiming I ran for my ego or making about me. This couldn't be further. It was my privilege to represent resident represent and answer all residents to work with the residents facing impact of imminent growth, the 95th Street residents with the Surbit District, the Explorers Trail and Waverly residents with the Grotta Development. While the results didn't stop the development, residents proactive involvement, which hadn't been happening, created better projects than initially proposed in development sooner than later. I cherish the friendships that emerged from the challenges like with Leslie Jansen, who had been sidelined through development. If you're listening, Leslie, thank you for taking my call. I feared it at first, but I never regretted it. To the amazing people of DeSoto I've met over the past eight years and on the recent campaign trail, DeSoto is a special place. Cherish it. Now to give a few things on public record. The $600,000 that was mentioned in public comment earlier. This was not a campaign issue. It was not about going negative. It was about accountability for your taxpayer dollars. So let me clarify some facts. Council was presented a contract for communications consultant in August 2022 that was described in the presentation is not to exceed. At issue was the ongoing on-call support. At that August meeting, I specifically asked about the ongoing support limit and whether it was open ended. The reply on record was that was a conservative maximum. The council at the time knew what we were voting on, and it was a not to exceed contract. The council, when discovered, this was first raised during the campaign. But it wasn't. It was raised February of 2024 and again in December of 2024, both times dismissed with plain blazed on council because we approved it as a simple line item in a pay ordinance of a consent agenda. You saw tonight what it takes to pull an invoice from a pay ordinance in a consent agenda. During the campaign, a statement titled Let's Talk Facts, Not Bull, most blatant misleading statement was made that every invoice was reviewed and voted on in open session because we approved the pay ordinance in the consent agenda. You saw what that looked like tonight. To be clear, we approved a $400,000 contract in December 2022 in a not to exceed presentation by staff. By end of December 2023, we had spent over $1,038,000 on that contract. At no time was council updated on what the scope had become or what had been done. After February 2024, I requested and reviewed all emails between city and the consultant. No written directive for work was found done outside the invoices. Per admission of Mike, it was all directed at verbal meetings of the finance committee or staff and the consultant. Note, this is the way to work around the Kansas Open Record Act. 600,000 was spent over presented amounts for EDC efforts, which according to the Let's Talk Facts, Not Bull statement was quote essential to establishing a professional functioning economic development department. In short, this was not in the approach approved scope. It also confirms that the facts of the finance, the fact, the finance committee, who called themselves the EDC Executive Committee, then approve of Sarah Ritter, the current EDC Chamber Chair Director, used the $600,000 to displace her as the lead of the nonprofit nonprofit organization and tried to divide the organization to two separate entities. Final note on this. Congratulations, Kevin Hahn and Michael, on being the 2026 DeSoto EDC Chairman. To present and future council members. Beware. If you find issues as you see with the 600,000, the buck won't stop at the top. It will be passed back to you. During the 600,000 issue, our attorney's response was that the council didn't seem concerned. So your actions do play into it. If they can slip something past you in the pay ordinances and you don't catch it immediately, you'll be blamed as complicit, even when they fail in their responsibility to inform you. Couple examples. No one has checked on or updated us on the Mays communication contract, which was according to Councilman Hannah Michael necessary because we needed this level of professionalism. Second example, the disc golf course at River Fest Park was brought to the park board as a community funded and using staff personal time. When it was presented to council, it was approved by us at an estimate of about $21,500 of staff time and equipment. As of last month, it exceeded $51,000 of staff time and equipment rental totaling more than 1,100 man hours down there. And that's not including our communication department's extensive time on it. So be watchful. You won't always be told everything. Finally, to our community, we have an amazing community, although, Ronnie, it's time to turn off the anonymous comments. I have always and will always serve our community, whether through scouts, rotary, photography, and many other ways. I love our community, and this is where I am living and plan to live, and my kids have grown up. Growth is here, and it won't slow down. And council, you're the one that manages it. This election has shown we are severely divided but awakened community. Events won't change the lack of trust and communication on issues that matter to our residents most. The race ended up being about transparency, communicative listening and communication, which are things that I have been strong at. But tonight demonstrates that's not the case. You will find out about projects when they come to a council vote. And only after possible, they will you be included. There have been many chances to start discussion on in our community about expressing interest in terror power well before tonight, and they were rebuffed. Expect to see possibilities like another data center. It's on ASTR's map. So things are coming and be prepared. I have faith in our new council members that they will fill this spot I leave for now and take up the torch of transparency, accountability, and truth. They will listen to residents with sincere. As for me, I'll remain involved and continue to work with our residents and keep them informed because this is our city. This is DeSoto, and I love our DeSoto.
Yes. Pardon the interruption, but as city attorney, I I do need to address a couple of things that you meant. I'm the in charge of our code of ethics at the city. And a couple of things you mentioned about the the contract, the Shaki contract, and you and I had many discussions. You kept coming back to me wanting a legal opinion that Mike had exceeded spending authority. I kept telling you this, the city council approved that contract not, and it was not a spending authority issue. And when you first came to me and talked about the extra money, this that I think you said $600,000. I specifically asked you was, are you claiming that this money was misspent or wasted? And your response to me, you did not have any issue that the work was done. Rather, your issue was about you not being made aware that the bills were exceeding what you expect. And I think that's important to point out because I think there's been a suggestion that somehow this money was wasted, or there's question, where is this money? And that you know, that's false. You told me that. And hold on, I'm not finished. So and in our discussions, you indicated you wanted to run, that would be a campaign issue, what you've just described. You also mentioned that you wanted to talk about Sarah Ritter, and I indicated to you both of those. The Sarah Ritter issue could not be discussed because of an agreement that was entered into. And despite you asking numerous times being in my office, I clearly indicated that there was no spending authority. No one exceeded spending authority, and I actually issued a memo to this entire council, including you going through it. And that memo was issued at least a year, if if not longer. It was a done issue and your reference to no one seemed to care. That was a comment by me, and it was in relating to you raising the the spending authority, and you had no support by anyone else on the council. You raised it and you, you know, made a big deal about it. You pounded the table. None of the other council members saw it the way you did because I had issued a memo explaining that there was no spending authority issue. So I just want to get that on the record because I do think there's some public perception out there that staff is allowing money to be, you know, wasted. And that's just not the case. I take my job very seriously. I've been here over 25 years. If I ever had a hint that somebody was abusing their position or spending the city's money inappropriately, I'd be the first one to speak up about it.
So first, you told me in our discussions that you actually didn't trust Shaki. And I had been avoiding using their name because of an agreement I had with the consultant. But also, my concern wasn't that was not spent. It was that was spent in addition to an out of scope of the contract. My issue was also that it was a not to exceed contract, and you and I went around about this, and I can publish the emails that we had back and forth on how this went down. And your statement, when I brought up the fact that Mike presented it to council as a not to exceed maximum conservative, was that that would in a law court of law would not be allowed as evidence because you can only look at the contract. At which point I asked you, the contract says not to exceed based upon this schedule. And I asked you, where is the schedule? And you could not point to the schedule in the contract that was there.
Well, if we can pull the contract.
Hold on, you wanted to have your time without being interrupted. On top of that, I asked you, the last email I have to you that never got answered was so this contract is a template for being able to spend up to like $5 million. And in your office, you told me, yes, the way you were interpreting it, there is no limit on the spending that that contract allowed.
Because you approved the invoices. That's what you're missing. There would never be $5 million spent because you, your duty as a council member, you review the bills and you decide yes or no to pay for them. No one else does.
So you're standing on that. But at that point, you wrote such a bad contract that was able to be interpreted as when it clearly said not to exceed. And the contract is published online. Everybody can go look at it themselves. And I can publish all of the emails we had back and forth of your defense of it.
But please do.
I will.
Please do.
And but the contract's online, and it says not to exceed, and that's what was presented to council. And there was never, unlike every other contract we have ever had, never did it come back with a change order saying we are exceeding what we were told. And therefore, because it was less than 400,000, we spent over a million. That was more than our street budget. The overage was more than our street budget the year that we passed it.
One other quick point. You also agreed that all the extra spending that you had issue with because you were not aware of it, you said, yes, it was under the on-call part of the contract. And it was explained to you that it did not. On-call is on-call. You don't know how much on-call you're going to use. And if you look at the contract under the on-call section, there is no predicted amount in the contract. So I don't want to continue to argue about it, but but it does.
I actually appreciate you doing this because to our residents, this proves the point of what I've been saying. So.
Kevin?
Wow, I had no comment until you went on attack. This does not prove those things, period. If we want to get some things out in front of residents, I want to be clear that what you're saying is not fact. They're your your interpretation, your position on certain issues. So I take offense to the fact that you take attacked me tonight and that you're setting the future council members and the existing council members up that I'm going to be doing something nefarious as the incoming chairman of the EDC.
I never stated that.
You you said, watch out for me.
No, I said, I said, I simply said, congratulations.
I didn't interrupt you when you were attacking me.
I did not.
I do not interrupt you when you're attacking me. So it it's really unfortunate to go out with this kind of an air of mistrust. of mistrust and ill content. And it's really unfortunate that we're having to spend time to rehash issues from years ago. So I don't. I don't know why the seeds of mistrust should be sown among ongoing council members, the incoming council members, the public. It's it's very unfortunate and I'm not really sure who you're trying and who you have been trying to cast. Because we can keep bringing it up. We can keep arguing about it. You can continue to blame Patrick. I think from a lot of the insinuations you've had and even some of the names that you've cast, you're directing a lot of the blame at Mike Brungart. You have publicly expressed your concerns of his performance and and indicated that you you say that he's good at some things and he's really not good at other things. So you publicly indicated your your lack of trust in his performance. And I, you know, I think I know out in the public, you've created this impression through the campaign process that you're against Mike in his role. That would be very unfortunate. You said public money was used to displace Sarah Ritter. That could be nothing farther from the truth. There were needs that the city had as everything heated up during the Panasonic process where we had needs for economic development support that we were not getting from the chambers. So we had to augment that. We, the city, had to augment that through reports that were provided to city council. We also had a lot of public relations, media relations communications need that supported all of the council members at that point in time. That's the nature of those on-call situations where we had professional services needs where there was no way to predict that that level was going to be. And that's what the on-call contract was for. Sure, it sounds like a lot of money that occurred over a period of time. It's a lot of money relative to a little money, but it was appropriate. Nothing nefarious or negligent or wasteful ever occurred with the money that was spent under that contract. So there's absolutely nothing to be gained at this point unless you want to make a point to get somebody fired or to get somebody ejected in some way or to cast somebody in a situation where they cannot be trusted. And whether it's that project, whether it's whether it's the roundabout that you've been taking a issue with, you know, you could really find about any project around and make a case that waste is occurring. You could say, you know, we wasted money in the Millin overlay program by adding streets to it when it came in hundreds of thousands of dollars over budget. And that was a waste of of city money. So it's a matter of how you want to look at how the needs that are right in front of us on any given day. And, you know, I'll tell the incoming council members, you're going to experience unknowns and uncertainties in the next four years that you're going to have to address and you're going to have to continue forward with and judgments are going to have to get made. But it doesn't mean that you should be in a situation where somebody is going to look back and go, you may, you you did something wrong years ago. So you're providing information that's misleading and inflammatory. You are providing information, but it's misleading and it's inflammatory and it's divisive. You are providing engagement in the way that you're communicating through the the campaign process. Again, you're creating uncertainty and skepticism among the residents of the governing body. We have done an amazing job of accomplishing some really, really cool stuff over the last eight years. Super challenging kinds of projects and issues that I'm just amazed how how well it has gone. We're talking about $8 million worth of parks and rec at the same time we have been, we'll be doing hundreds of millions of dollars of infrastructure projects. And it's all been been completed very well. So I hope, Mayor, that I get an opportunity at the maybe at the outgoing meeting to to express my gratitude for for the ongoing incoming council members. Because I'm disappointed that I'm that we're put in a position having to be defensive.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, it's just disappointed that this is how after, you know, the the good things that have been able to accomplish over the last eight years that this is I chosen to go out. This golf course project raised over $100,000 of community funds. Built an amazing facility. Staff time was used, equipment, staff equipment was used, fuel was used, but apparently there was a whole lot more poison ivy and honeysuckle and undergrowth in there to to clear and that effort. Then what was estimated when that project was started, but it was just walk the park and take a look at what was created and and I just can't believe that you would attack that that project that has brought to date already about 1,500 new people into DeSoto that hadn't come here before to to experience that experience our park and see, you know, what what a great little town we've got here. So just I I guess I'm at a loss for words. So I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Yeah.
Yes, I was gonna ask you how your wedding was.
It was great.
Yeah.